Well, in a minute, okay? I have, I know, I gotta read the thing. Geez, I think this is my. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Orange Town Planning Board Meeting of March 11, 2015. Can you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Stewart, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, my name is Kevin Garvey. I'm the chairman of this board. I have ground rules that I go over at every meeting. This is not special for this meeting. Everybody who wants to speak can speak. There's a sign-in sheet. If you didn't make the sign-in sheet, you raise your hand after we go through the list and you can come up. There's a three-minute time limit for everybody who wants to speak. That's it. Three minutes. If you go over, I'm gonna gavel you and tell you thank you. I just wanna make sure that everybody knows what the rules are. Okay? I run a very tight meeting. I am not trying to be rude. I'm just trying to tell you matter-of-fact that that's the way it is. Three minutes. I don't care what your status is, it's three minutes. I will not abide yelling out. If you can't be civil, I will ask you to leave. It's very simple, okay? It's the same thing you tell your children when they go to school. Be civil. That's all I'm asking. I understand that people have issues with this, that's fine. Remember, the public has rights and so does the applicant. That's all I'm asking you to remember. Okay? Three minutes. Now, I see signs in the audience. I will not abide signs being held up. If you wanna hold up your sign while you're talking at the podium, be my guest. We're up here trying to do our job. We don't need the distractions. Okay? Again, I don't want this to get out of control. You have the ground rules. Do not shout out, do not say, you know, liar, anything. I am not going to abide it. I will ask you nicely to stop. After that, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Okay? So we're gonna go. We're here for an Alatech site plan in addition to Building 123 PB number 15-3. Final site plan review and review of secret negative declaration 401 North Milltown Road, Pearl River. Let me go over a few other things that I forgot. I'm sorry. What happens is, for those of you who have never been to a planning board meeting, I will go through, the applicant will have an opening statement. When the applicant is done, I will read all of the pertinent information into the record. I will then ask for comments from the board. Then, we will ask the public to speak. Any of the questions that the public has will come to the board directly and not to the applicant. At the end of the public speaking, we will have the questions answered to the best of our abilities. Okay? That's, there's not going to be a debate between the audience members and the applicant. That's the way it is, just like they did at the ZBA. So I'm following the same exact rules. Okay? Then, at the end, we're gonna close the public portion of the hearing and we're gonna vote. Or, if they ask for a continuance, then we'll hold it over, but that's up to them. Okay? That's the way it is. Okay, Mr. Brenner? Oh, I'm sorry. Can you please state your name and your affiliation with the project for the record?
Donald Brenner, attorney at the Pan New York. I represent the client, Alatech.
I'm David Sodolsky. I'm the president and CEO of Alatech.
My name is Chuck Sorenson. I'm the senior scientist and engineer for the company.
Rachel Baris. I am the site civil engineer for the project.
Mark Schneider Kraut, process engineer, Alatech.
Okay, Mr. Brenner, are you ready? Okay, we need the microphone. And one other thing, the stenographer is keeping a record of tonight's meeting, so we do not want sidebar conversations behind her. If you feel you need to speak to your neighbor or somebody else, we ask politely that you go out to the back room and then come back in without disturbing the meeting. Okay? So, once again, Mr. Brenner.
Okay. My client, Alatech, filed a building application with the Orange Town Building Department on June 19, 2014. They received their rejection on July 6, 2014, and they were instructed to go forward through the planning board and get the site plan and approval. The first meeting of the planning board was held on September 10, 2014. At that time, the planning board, your board granted preliminary approval with certain conditions. Needless to say that one of the conditions was, which was kinda unique, is that he had to go to the zoning board to get performance standards before we can come back to you for final approval. That was kinda unique. It was something which turned out to be very worthwhile because it reinforces anything in terms of anybody would have questions as related to the environment. We appeared before the zoning board on November 19, 2014, for the performance standards, which is what the zoning, planning board required. At that time, there was certain information that the zoning board wanted to have, and therefore, we asked for continuation. The next evening, we appeared before the ACO board on 11/20/14, and we received approval for the design that was before the board. We then reappeared before the zoning board on January 21, 2015, and at that time, we received approval with conditions. One of the major conditions was we had to reach certain, we had to do certain standards with the fire inspector, and we had to agree with certain terms of the New York State DEC, which gave us a report letter dated 1/15/15. And the letter was signed by Joseph R. Murney. Now, also at that time, the zoning board requested that outside consultants be brought in to check the operation of Alatech, or the proposed operation of Alatech, and my client funded two independent consultants, which submitted a report to the zoning board for their approval. So therefore, when the zoning board granted performance standards, they had a letter of approval from the DEC, subject to certain conditions. They had a report from Trinity, and they had a report from, I think, Triumphant Environment. Again, also subject to the DEC letters. Okay, now, we are having ongoing discussions with the DEC, and we will meet all the requirements that the DEC provided in that letter with, for the zoning board. We are now here before the planning board to receive final approval. We believe we've met all the conditions that were imposed upon the planning board in preliminary, all the conditions imposed upon the zoning board, and the architecture review board. I think the president, CEO of the company would like to make a general statement, and then I think we'll go into the full meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Good evening. My name is Dave Sodolsky. I'm the president and CEO of Alatech. Alatech's mission is helping to solve two global problems: reducing our reliance on imported oil and help combat global warming and climate change by making chemicals with lower carbon footprints. So what we're doing is, we're converting non-food biomass, like wood, into chemicals otherwise made from petroleum. These widely-used chemicals, benzene, toluene, and xylanes, are produced safely in our process under strict operating controls and emissions eight to 18,000 times below the strict limits set by the New York State DEC. We're conducting the research here in Pearl River, New York, at the 200-acre site, the Pfizer campus, which is zoned exactly for the type of research work we are doing. And we're doing this work now to provide the data that will need it by future licensees of our technology to build large commercial units in other parts of the USA and the world near where there's lots of biomass. And the work that we are applying for now to build a test facility will be operated intensively for 18 to 36 months, after which, be used sporadically, and then over the long term, Alatech will be conducting research and development here in Pearl River to continually improve the technology as it's licensed throughout the world. In the course of doing this work, we're bringing jobs. We have 22 employees now. We have five jobs opening. We'll add another 10 jobs for the new testing facility. We're replacing jobs lost at the site. More importantly, we're providing an example to others to come to the site and replace the jobs, thousands of jobs that have been lost over the last five years. Alatech was originally founded out of technology at the University of Massachusetts. We received funding from NYSERTA. We were incubated at a small incubator in Lower Manhattan that was funded by Mayor Bloomberg's initiative. And now, we're working with major global technology and government organizations with strong reputations for safe, environmentally sound businesses, research, development, and commercialization practices. We appreciate having the opportunity, having this project reviewed, and we look forward to a long and mutually beneficial relationship with the Town of Orange Town. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. One other thing that I need to read into the record. This is a matter, this matter is on for final site approval tonight. In addition, secret regulations permit the lead agency, prior to its decision to approve an action, to consider new information that may be provided. To the extent that there has been or will be newer additional information presented to the board, at the conclusion of this hearing, the board may take appropriate action with respect to its previously issued negative declaration. Mr. Young?
The comments.
I'm sorry? I was gonna read that when I started the...
No, no, I mean the comments.
Oh, do I read the comments first?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, a little nervous. All materials that have been submitted to the planning board have been and continue to be available for review by the public anytime during regular business hours at the building department. In addition, there is a packet in the back of the room available for review by the public, which contains the information that has been reviewed by the planning board with respect to this matter. Also note the following: the letter from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation dated January 15, 2015; there's a letter from Trinity Consultants dated January 21, 2015; and a letter from Triumphant Environmental dated January 21, 2015. I'm gonna start to read the pertinent information. I am not going to read every single letter that was submitted to the board. I will reference the majority of them as I have before me. Rest assured that if you submitted a letter the proper way to Cheryl, and it was distributed the proper way to each member of this board, then it will be part of the record. Okay? Moving forward. And I think some of you know what I mean by the proper way. Okay, again, we have the letter from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation from February 28. Rob?
We'll start with this.
Where are we? The PRC has no additional comments beyond comments submitted by other agencies for this project. From the Office of Building, Zoning, and Planning Administration Enforcement, Town of Orange Town. John Giordella, March 11, 2015. The maximum allowable height for the building extension is approximately 97.5 feet. The maximum allowable height for the vent pipe is approximately 117.5 feet, based on the setback in the town boundary line. Please verify and correct these values in the zoning bulk table. From the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town. There are four comments. There is a letter from Mr. Mark Schneider Kraut. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
From the Rockland County Department of Planning. There are 12 comments. Mr. Brenner?
Eleven.
I'm sorry, it looks like 12.
Yeah.
Oh, that's 1, 2, 3.
1, 2, 3.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brenner, there are 11 comments from the planning. Any issues?
No, we will correct the, there were some procedural things we have to correct in terms of designation on the drawings. We don't have any problems with that letter.
From the Rockland County Department of Health. Plans now show a stormwater management system to remediate the increase in impervious cover. Application is made to the Rockland County Department of Health for review of the system and compliance with the county mosquito code. Any issues, Mr. Brenner? From the New York State Department of Transportation. Jennifer Clark. I have no comments on the proposed project. Rob, what about the correction to the tape?
I'm sorry?
The correction to the tape. Do I read it to the transcripts?
Uh, yeah, you can. Every year, we could add some of that.
There's a clarification on the transcripts at the end of our planning board meeting. Mr. Young, it says, "One more question. What is the hours of operation? Are you 24/7?" Mr. Whiting, "It will be a 24-hour operation, either buying or selling. It's a research operation, so will not be every week, every day, but when we are running, it will be 24 hours." The audio states, "It will be a 24-hour operation, either 5 or 7. It's a research operation, so will not be every week, every day, but when we are running, it will be 24 hours." 5 or 7 refers to 5 or 7 days per week. It is clear, when you listen to it, I listen to it, and Bill listens to it independently, we've heard the same thing. So that's just a clarification. There is a correspondence from Ms. Heather Hurley noting the same, noting about clarification on the tape. There's a letter from the Town of Clarkstown. From the Rockland, I'm sorry, Town of Clarkstown Planning Board.
Chairman, just one thing, if you're correcting that tape, Alatech sells no material from this process. It is strictly done for research, and there will be no sale at any time of any material.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. There's a letter from Mr. Daniel Richmond of Zarin &amp; Steinmetz. There's the minutes from the zoning board of appeals from January 21. There's a letter from the Rockland County Department of Highways. Building 123 should have minimum adverse impacts upon county roads in the area. A Rockland County Highway Department permit is not required. An email, I believe, and if it's a letter, I apologize, but there is correspondence from From Thomas Sullivan. Amy Wertham. Veronica Corbier. Mary Gidey. Debbie Donahue. Kenneth Cully. Nancy Caruso Prespapino. Denise Elselmi. Allison McKenna. Another one from Thomas Sullivan. Another one from Thomas Sullivan. An email from Kathleen Kelly. Another one from Allison McKenna. Another one from Jean Devan. A letter from Heather Hurley. Denise Finnegan Shorn. Also, I have a petition. 81 additional pages, which means it's probably 83 pages long. There are, this is a partial print of the petition. There's online 1,782 signatures on the petition. There is a letter from Mr. Andy Stewart. There's another correspondence from Heather Hurley. John Pousset Dart. Margaret Smith. Another from Heather Hurley. Deborah Freed. Jean Gunn. Another from Heather Hurley. John Torme. And a letter from the other members of the town board. Another letter from Cheryl, excuse me, Heather Hurley. Joe Savino. Jenny Pasquale. Then I have a correspondence from Booker Engineering. I'll read the points. The application shows potential significant impact with respect to stormwater runoff can be mitigated. We therefore recommend an Alatech site plan be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments, and there are eight of them. There's correspondence from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to both Ms. Shorn and Ms. Hurley. What else am I missing? That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman...
I did.
I reviewed the county letter again. We had provided all of the information to the Town of Clarkstown, which I thought was the only requirement we have. If you take a look at item number 7 in their request, they're requesting other information, which I don't believe is not only under their purview, but I don't think it's required. I would request at the end of the hearing that that item be overwritten.
From the County Department of Planning, or from...
From the Town, from the County Department of Planning, that's right. Number 7.
Okay.
Well, Clarkstown has weighed in, so that...
Okay, you're satisfied? Okay, all right, okay, fine.
We don't have to override it.
Okay.
Okay. So it stays...
They're gonna pack it and they weigh in.
It stays part of the record.
Okay, fine. Because they have four items in Clarkstown, Department of Planning.
I read, I noted them.
Yeah.
Moving forward? Okay, moving forward. We are now going to hear from members of the board. Mr. Young?
Mr. Brenner?
Yes, sir.
You indicated that Alatech is not selling any of its products.
That is correct.
But in your letter to Mr. Stewart on January 8, you indicate that you do provide samples to potential customers.
That is correct, and I have been informed by the president, under no circumstances will these samples be sold. They will be given free, and they will not be sold.
They're sold and they're tested, I'm assuming, to see what the components are of how these wood chips burn, wood pellets burn?
No, what this is, is it's the samples of the chemicals produced by the process. They're considered prototypes, and they're expressly considered R&amp;D expenses under the IRS Code 174. Representation or model of a product that is produced to evaluate and resolve uncertainty concerning the product during the development or improvement. So basically, they're provided to these, these other companies so they can assess the technology and decide if they're interested in investing. Is a technology viable? Is it going to have promise or not? But these are not products for sale.
So the products are not for sale, but they are applied to wood pellets at a pellet-producing facility?
No, but the technology that we're working on, I wasn't clear at the start, I should have given more details there. We take wood, we're proposing to do the majority of the work, and the testing facility is called wood flour. It's like sawdust.
Sir, do you have to get closer to the mic so everybody can hear you?
Yeah, the process takes biomass. It's heated in the reactor. The gases are converted by a catalyst into the chemicals that we're producing. So the products are the chemicals that we make, which are the BTX, that are made from the process. So we're not, we're purchasing a commercial facility, say, we purchase logs or wood, and then grind them up and feed them into the system. What we're doing is we'll be purchasing wood flour, which is an item of commerce, and feeding that into our reactor system. It's heated rapidly, and the vapors then are converted by a catalyst into the resulting products.
As the per... Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, these chemicals are being made by a process. These chemicals have not been made before. The chemicals are made today from petroleum by other processes. So these chemicals become, now become, have to be converted in subsequent steps by others into things like plastics. So in order to know if the plastic made from this new chemical route is a good plastic, other companies who are in the plastics business have to, have to make their own prototypes from our starting material and determine whether the, that product meets all their specifications and quality and that sort of thing.
What I'm getting at is, as a purchaser of fuel for a utility, I require an MSDS, basically outlining what ingredients we're talking about here. And I know there's been some resistance for proprietary reasons that these, the ingredients aren't being given. I'd also like to know how this product would be burned, if applied to the sawdust, perhaps, and biomass.
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing any burning in our process. So the products that we make, let's take an example, xylanes. Xylanes would be, is one of the components of the product. So that's used to make beverage bottles. It's reacted with some other chemicals and made a bottle. It's not burned. So these are petrochemicals that are used, when they're made from petroleum, the chemicals are used to make all, most of the other plastics in the world. So in the same way that red, yellow, and blue are used to make all the colors, benzene, toluene, xylene, and four other chemicals we don't make are used to make all the plastics in the world. So benzene ends up in your car, and the tires in your car, in my eyeglasses for making nylon. Toluene ends up in polyurethane, the foam cushions in your car. And xylanes is used to make, you know, the beverage bottles, it's used to make polyester, you know, a whole host of materials. So the BTX that we produce, you know, in these, in these small quantities, is, they're prototype samples, so they're not ready to be made into anything else. But companies that are interested in assessing our talent, you would take these samples, look at them, and determine if they think the technology is viable for producing them eventually on very large scale. But these products are not, they're made to be burned, they're made to be converted into other plastics. So wood goes into chemical, becomes chemicals. We don't take the chemicals and apply them as a fuel or something in the future.
It will not be applied to fuel.
The value is more in terms of making something a functional value. Now, in the, today, these materials are used in gasoline for high-octane ratings. So that's another use of them. Now, in the, today, these materials are used in gasoline for high octane ratings. So that's another use of them.
Which is burned.
Pardon me?
Which is burned.
That's correct, that's how you get your octane ratings in your car. So about twenty-five percent of the gasoline in your cars that you drove here today contains, is B T X.
What I'm trying to get at is, I'd like to know what is in this, everybody here in this room would like to know. And an M S D S, excuse me. An M S D S is something I would require before even accepting samples, before purchasing.
So that is a requirement, we do have an M S D S for the liquid product.
And is that, can that be shared with us through an N D A? It might alleviate a lot of tension here in this room.
We can't ship any product without the M S D S, it's a D O T requirement, so.
So what we would like then is to make sure that your M S D S sheets are available to any time the building inspector wants to come on, come in and do any kind of unannounced site inspection or anything like that. I think that that's what.
That's no problem, because that's also an OSHA requirement, that we have all the chemicals, including the mixtures that we make, is included in our M S D S books, which are right there in the front door.
You and I understand that, but the people behind you might not.
An M S D S is a material safety data sheet, which outlines in a five-to-ten-page document, basically what's in the products. And it's for public consumption, obviously.
They're also required for OSHA, and they're also required for the government E P A. Not just the state D E C, but the E P A can come in at any time and ask the company, show me your M S D S sheets and show me if, any chemical that they have on the site. They can ask for the M S D S sheets and they have to produce them. And they have to be visible and for all the employees to have access to them.
Continuing on, I've read through the various analyses that were done, New York D E C. In terms of continuous emissions monitoring, will there be monitoring on the stack? Some sort of pollution controls that will be monitored round the clock or when the units are in operation? What controls criteria are going to be in place, should there be any violations, working in the power industry? Continuous emission monitoring that are on power plants, trains, tugs for transportation of fuel? It's, it's an environmental requirement right now. So what, I mean, I see you're producing, you're going to install monitoring equipment, but I'd like to know more as to what that will be.
Okay. Why don't we, we talk about the monitoring equipment and the abatement equipment that's been, that we'll be installing here in the technology? So first of all, the emissions and the pollution abatement is going to be done by a catalytic oxidizer. It's described in detail in the D E C report on page two. The emissions of air pollutants from the facility will be controlled using a catalytic oxidizer, which is the same technology used to treat car and truck emission sources. This technology has proven to be very reliable since its introduction in nineteen seventy-five. They propose to monitor the performance of the converter by continuous monitoring of the delta T across the unit. And they propose to continuously monitor the signal for the oxidizer's air blowers. These two measurements will tell if the oxidizer is working, mechanically working, and the hydrocarbon oxidation reaction is occurring. And the facility will commence shutdown procedures if the measures show the oxidizer is not working properly. So in terms of monitoring, in the D E C's report summary on page three, the last two comments of the summary was, "Anelitex must maintain all records necessary for demonstrating compliance onsite for the period of five years and make them available to representatives of the department, meaning the D E C, upon request. These records will include verification of all emission rate parameters used in the model." And it goes on to say, "The facility will install and control monitor equipment." So I'll talk a little bit about the, what this system is. It's the catalytic oxidizer, delta T, and this is all very well-known equipment, so it's regulated. And it's prescribed in the E P A and federal law forty CFR, parts sixty and sixty-one, applicable to catalytic oxidizers of air emissions. Now, the data that we generate, plus the data associated with process flow rates, temperature, pressure, and compositions, will be stored in the unit's data acquisition and archiving system. And this system is essentially the same used by R and D facilities all over the world. And records from the system will be available for inspection by the D E C for a period of five years. And as the D E C required in their report, the records will have all the information the D E C requested to allow them to verify all the emission rate parameters used in their model.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Bond.
Now, does the D E C, do they collect samples in terms of your emissions?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Mr. Bond?
Does the D E C collect samples of your? Does the D E C collect samples of your exhaust and are they shipped out to like an independent, or that they test on their own?
No, because, I mean, because the facility, the facility hasn't been built yet. But what they did do is they reviewed all of our laboratory data and our calculations, which are using scientific and engineering-recognized tools and methods of material balance of the process, our process design, the design capabilities. And from that, they're able to make estimates of the amount of emissions being abated by the catalytic oxidizer. Then they take those results and they put it into an air dispersion model. This is a model that's required by the E P A. Everybody uses this model and it takes a look at the dispersion or the, how the pollutants are distributed in the atmosphere. And then they compare that against their annual guidelines concentration. So basically, that's a level not to exceed, and this is the level that we're eighteen to eighteen thousand times below. So we're, based on, based on this, and this is the same method that anyone else would be subject to in terms of the way this engineering analysis is conducted. It's a standard methodology, we've shown through that to be, well, exactly what the D E C report. If I can, if I can also add, excuse me, if I can also add, Mr. Bond. The D E C does their calculations and estimates based on what's called the maximum potential to emit. So in other words, if we have a car and our car, we drive sixty miles an hour and we drive twenty thousand miles a year, that's not how this calculation is done. They would say, well, your maximum car speed is a hundred and sixty miles an hour, and you could conceivably drive your car twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, every day of the year. So they do, they calculate what is the maximum that you could possibly do. And so when they calculate these calculations, which showed that we were eighteen to eighteen thousand times below the D E C set limits, they assume, for instance, that even though this is an R and D facility where you're running in campaigns and shutting down and trying different things, they assume that you operate the unit twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks a year, at the maximum possible capacity. And they also assume that the catalytic oxidizer, which, you know, is a technology well-known since the seventies, instead of operating at the ninety-nine point five percent destruction efficiency, rather, they make the calculations at ninety-eight percent destruction efficiency. So you have, in reality, you'll have four, one quarter the amount of emissions that the calculations assume. So it's all these methods used to be conservative, to make sure that the system will be safe.
And in terms of product that you'll be moving off the site? I mean, that's requires what, a permit from the D E C for roads and things of that nature?
Well, what's, you know, what's going off the site is going to be taken away by a waste hauler. By, by a waste hauler currently at the site, it's serviced by Veolia, that's who Pfizer uses. We potentially use the same hauler. So it's not, it's disposed of, it's not, it's not for, item for sale.
All right, and as far as, are there procedures in place for, you know, there was a spillage or something?
Absolutely. And I believe we've inspected by the Orange Town Fire Department, the hazmat team. Chuck, anything else to add on?
I'll just say that.
Spills and the like?
Well, the, the liquid storage, which is a minimal amount of storage on site, is contained, it's contained within a spill containment area. Spill kits, and then we also have contracted with two spill, spill cleanup companies if we ever needed them. And also the county's hazmat team. So there's plenty of safeguards in place to assure the integrity of the storage system.
Has the county hazmat team come out and made a site visit?
Yes, they have.
Okay, and they're aware of what you're going to have and what they're going to need to fight whatever spillage, if, God forbid, it does happen, they'll be there?
Yes.
And are you in consultation with the Orange, excuse me, the Pro River Fire Department about what's on site and that way that they have to?
So one of the requirements is to inform them of everything we're doing, so we've had conversations in the past and will continue to have.
Has Pro River come out and made a site visit?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Bond.
Sorry, does Veolia take title and control of the disposal when they leave the site?
Yeah, I believe they do, yeah. Also, just to give you an idea of how much is being stored on site, the maximum we can store is six drums, or about three hundred and thirty gallons. Compares to about twenty or forty thousand gallons that are stored at the Shell Station on the corner, across the street from the Pfizer site. So this is really very, very small. And it's, it's safe, secure, it's inside, fire prevention, fire, you know, all regulatory things to make sure it's safe and secure. But it's a fraction of what's stored at a gas station.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bond, Mr. Warren?
Do you answer my question, I was concerned with storage?
I, you've answered, so I have no other questions, thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, I guess one of the benefits and drawbacks of being on the under the line is a lot of the questions got asked already. We have a couple, and if you can just pardon me, I might ask a couple of questions that were answered already because I wasn't here the first time this came up. So I tried to read everything, all those letters, Mr. Garby, discussed, I tried to keep up with that, so hopefully I didn't miss anything. So I talked about the production and storage and the risk of leakage. Talked about how you're going to monitor emissions, but what actually? I'm sorry, we talked about monitoring emissions, what actually is being emitted from the factory?
If we look in the report by the D E C, they lay out exactly what the maximum potential emissions would be.
Okay, easy.
Okay, again, these are potential to emit, so these are maximum rate, twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week, three hundred and sixty-five-day operation. And then the catalytic oxidizer is derated to provide a conservative estimate and safety margin. And the, from the D E C report, benzene sixteen pounds a year. Toluene six pounds a year, and xylene's about a half a pound a year. To put that into perspective, I checked with the E P A, and in Rockland County, every day, there was more than two hundred pounds of benzene emitted by vehicles. So we just wanted to, I just wanted to put that out there, to put that into perspective, that we're, our worst-case maximum emission potential is sixteen pounds a year. And again, that's an overstatement of what the actual emissions will be.
Okay, and when you say overstatement, then what typically would the, the emissions, in terms of pounds of those products? What would be a typical that you would expect to see over the course of the year, or a day, or a month?
A quarter, four pounds a year.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if, that was calculated based on, as mentioned, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, which is not how R and D units operate. It also assumed, it's on on page one of the comment section of the D E C letter. The emission rates assumed a ninety-eight percent benzene abatement, projected actual destruction percentage is ninety-nine point five percent. So that alone would, would reduce the sixteen pounds to four pounds, still not taking into account that we're not operating twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five, and also not taking into account that we're not going to operate the thing at a hundred percent, you know, at the maximum you could push it at, you, you just don't do that. So there's a lot of conservatism in these numbers, which is how safe practice is done.
Okay, thank you. Second follow-up to that, you said that the emissions will be constantly monitored and data will be kept on site. Is there like an automatic shutdown system if the levels exceed the guidelines?
Chuck, do you want to answer?
The answer is yes. We have an alarm system and a automatic shutdown system to shut down the unit and ensure it's safe. Also, our practices are to operate the oxidizer at all times, so we will never be operating without the, without that oxidizer online.
Okay, great. The question we had about the M S D S for the chemicals you're producing, is there also a list of the chemicals you're using or the materials you're using to make the chemicals?
Well, I mean, just, just from the global perspective, the purpose of the process is not to use chemicals, we're using biomass and making it into.
I might have stated that, I mean, the, the raw material you're using to make the chemicals. I know there's been questions about there being some proprietary reasons not to disclose the ingredients, but I know there's concerns about what the ingredients are going to be to make the chemicals.
Actually, the, the raw material, the only raw material is, is the biomass, so it's the woodflower. And there's an M S D S for that. The key is to, we also, we're also making products that are green, meaning they're not made from petroleum, we're making them from biomass. And so you don't want to use anything else but things that are, come from a renewable, sustainable source. And so that's the whole purpose of the technology, is not to make, use chemicals to make chemicals, but to use the biomass. For instance, wood, converting that directly into these, these chemicals that are otherwise made from petroleum.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Mandell?
Yes, several questions. Mr. Whiting stated at the last hearing, to convert biomass, ground wood from, from, or from agricultural products to form chemicals. The website states wood, sawdust, cornstover, sugarcane byproducts, and other non-food materials as feedstock. In reply to the D E C, you state woodflower for the first year. Specifically, what will you be using? Is it going to be woodflower?
We said woodflower for the first year, that's correct.
Okay, and the source of that woodflower?
It's a commercial supplier.
And what's, where is he getting, is he using any sort of waste treated or recycled wood?
No, sir.
What is it going to be then primarily, trees and lumber?
Yes.
Is any of that going to be something that's been treated for preservatives or anything?
No, sir.
Okay, and what company is going to be supplying it?
We haven't picked a company, but there are several, there are many suppliers of woodflower in the United States.
Let me see. In the D E C questions, response to question number three, you state low levels of mineral-containing ash will result. What minerals, and will they escape any emissions?
Okay, these, these minerals are basically the same thing that you'd find in your home fireplace. When you, when this wood is decomposed and reacted in the reactor, the minerals, which are things like sodium, potassium, calcium, magnesium, common harmless materials, they are, become a fully solid material in the reactor, they become ash. Again, just like a home fireplace. These, we have all kinds of solid collection devices on the unit, so no ash will be released, we're collecting it. And that, that's a solid waste product from the process itself.
So it's going to be collected as solid waste and there'll be no emissions?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
None in the emissions, right?
None.
We're going to the other biomass, let me go on for here. You talked about other biomass fuels noted earlier, do you plan to use any of these in the future?
We're not going to use anything, anything that we will use, we will get any required permits from the D E C.
So you can't tell us now if you're going to use any of those in the future?
No, I think we would, we would like to try, use cornstover, but before we do that, if required, to get any permits from the D E C, we will obtain them.
What, what, what feed fuel would you be, what feed would you be getting, what would you be using in the future? What's your possible listing, is it what was listed on your website? The cornstover, the sugarcane byproducts?
Those are potential choices, that's correct.
So we have, there are.
Pardon me?
There are numerous potential sources then for the fuel.
There are several that are broadly used in the world, but again, we would not use anything without any and all required permits from the D E C. anything without any and all required permits from the DEC.
So you're telling us, you're telling us just that you're going to use the wood flour and anything else, you'll check with the DEC, so we won't know what you'll be using at that time in the future? Is that correct?
Well, I think if we file, we'll notify the town that we're filing with the DEC. In other words, right now, right now the permit is with the DEC's for wood flour. If it's changed, let's say a year down the line, and changes to be made, the application that goes to the DEC can also go to the town.
That's something that we should be looking at. If we're using corn products, is there any pesticides, herbicides, any, is it, has it been altered in any manner, shape, or form, the stuff that they're going to be using? What could come out in the, in the emissions from those products in the future? We should know that now if we're going to make a decision based upon the possibility of using this in the future.
Please understand, I think we've said this before, no pesticides will ever be discharged from this system. No pesticides will ever be discharged from this system.
Are we bringing in products that might have pesticides, herbicides?
No pesticides will ever be discharged from this system.
So you can't tell us if something is going to come in that was treated with pesticides?
I don't know, I do know that if something is going to change, you have to get a DEC permit, and the town will be notified.
Okay. Still think you should be listening to them now. Okay, in addition to the feedstock, what other chemicals are added to the process?
Nothing. None.
None?
The only things that come in, we use nitrogen for inerting, and that's similar to nitrogen that's used in Nyack Hospital, for example.
Okay. In the future, do you plan to produce any diesel, gasoline, jet fuel in the future as part of your R&amp;D process?
No, sir.
Okay. Some of these questions are, that were submitted by the public, and we'd like an answer on it, thank you.
We want to answer all the questions that you have.
Okay. At the September 10, 2014 meeting, Mr. Whiting stated the process generates CO2 and CO, and it generates some minor hydrocarbon emissions that are thermal oxidized. Exactly which hydrocarbons, could you list them, that are oxidized in the process?
Okay, we changed that from a thermal oxidizer to a catalytic oxidizer. The catalytic oxidizer is a much better technology, it's more effective, and we already discussed the chemicals, the benzene, the toluene, and the xylene quantities in the earlier question.
That's the only thing that will be used, those three chemicals will be coming out, okay? All right. All right, are there anything else in those emissions?
Anything else is at extremely low levels.
What would they be?
They'd be less than a half a pound, the xylene was a half a pound, everything else is less than that.
What other, what other chemicals possibly could be emitted then? Less than half of a pound?
These are all trace materials, they're all disclosed to our discussions under confidentiality with the regulatory authorities that we interacted with.
So you're not, will not list, okay. Okay, further, you said regarding emissions, you stated remove emissions below any requirements. We are in the middle of a design for that right now. Have you finished your design? Has it been finalized?
Yes.
Okay, and that's with the catalytic oxidizer?
The catalytic oxidizer design is not fully completed, the pressure drop is, is the last remaining item on that, but the rest of the system is fully designed.
Okay, you still have that problem with the pressure drop then?
Correct.
Okay.
The catalytic oxidizer itself is a commercial unit, so it's something we're purchasing from a vendor who's been making them for a long, long time.
Okay. During my inspection of the site for the second time on March 10, in a meeting with you and several other members of your company, I asked your, I asked you about your lab unit or your prototype that was located at 170A on the Pfizer campus, which is located in the town of Clarkstown, for which you were granted a permit by their building department, that is Clarkstown. At a location in 2013, you produced between four and six samples. You stated to use the cryogenic process to trap all emissions, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Oh, one clarification too, it's New York State that brought you into, State Development Agency that supplied $750,000 grant that brought you into the state of New York?
Actually, I reside in the state of New York. The technology came out of the University of Massachusetts at Amherst, where Professor Huber, the co-founder of the company along with myself, was working at the time. So the early R&amp;D was done at University of Massachusetts at Amherst, and I ran, I was based in New York. We were housed at an incubator in Lower Manhattan that's run by New York University and Polytech Institute of Brooklyn, and the incubator itself was under program created by Mayor Michael Bloomberg in the 2008 dark days of our Great Recession to try and stimulate economic development in the city. The incubator received some funding from NYSERTA, and Alatech was fortunate to get some of that, you know, get their support, which was, you know, gave us 12 bucks an hour to hire an NYU business student as an intern, he's now one of our full-time employees. It was very difficult to raise, it's not the smartest, the best time to be starting up a company, although I'm told that half the companies in the Dow average were started during the Great Depression, so hopefully that's a sign for our future. But we eventually, at the end of 2011, beginning of 2012, we secured initial tranches of funding, and the state of New York referred us to the Pfizer site. So it was in, I believe it was in one of the economic development offices in Westchester. We had been looking for, to put down roots somewhere between where we are and Philadelphia area, because that's where a lot of catalyst scientists are, a lot of chemical engineers, and it's a place where people want to come to live, because we also recruit people from all over the country to come work for us. So we were made aware of the Pfizer location, there, I guess there's two and a half million square feet of R&amp;D space and manufacturing, and Pfizer vacated, I think, 1.5 million square feet, so it was a huge amount of empty space, and it was a priority for the state of New York to find, put other people in there to utilize the facility, and so while we are leasing about 12,000 square feet, it's perfect space for us, and, you know, we're delighted to be there. We were also pleased to repay the trust and early support that the state of New York gave us. The amount of money was peanuts, but, you know, the faith and the trust, New York was a perfect place to be, we had access to legal, investment, other advice, and so it worked out perfectly well.
Going back to that, your prototype of your lab that was in the Clarkstown facility, can you use the cryogenic process to trap emissions from the vent pipe? A disposal is required by law, since you took all the emissions up there and used the cryogenic process to eliminate all emissions, can that be used to, as part of the process that you're making now to eliminate all emissions?
No, we did look at that, that was the first thing we looked at, but for several reasons, it's not practical and/or it's actually at a larger scale, potentially unsafe for our employees. It's one thing to practice it in a small scale in a laboratory, in a laboratory hood, but it's a different thing in this size equipment. The catalytic oxidizer is recognized as something called best available control technology, that's an EPA term, that's indicating it's the best type of technology for controlling these kinds of emissions from processes like this.
As we mentioned, it's been in existence since 1975, so it's well-known, well-established, there's even, you know, code in the regulations about how you monitor it and so on, so it's the smartest choice in terms of reliability and safety that we could pick.
Okay, this may also be regarding that prototype. Between February of 2014 and March of 2015, your process from your prototype or lab produced 5,800 pounds of hazardous waste that was all handled and transported by Viola. What were the, what products and amounts of these products were produced at this facility at that time? Is it the same as you're producing now, or was it something else?
Can you repeat the question in those numbers a bit slower?
Yeah, between February of 2014 and March of 2015, your process from the prototype or lab, whatever we want to use, produced 5,800 pounds of hazardous waste that was handled and transported by your hazardous waste company, Viola. I just wanted to know what was produced from, you said there was four to six samples produced during that time period?
You know, I can't answer that question here, you know, without reviewing our records, but one thing I will say is that in our lab process, in our product collection area, we use a significant amount of solvent to capture the product. So the majority of the waste generated today is a solvent that we use strictly for the purposes of being able to conduct these experiments and make these measurements. It's not something, again, that we're going to use on the, with the new project.
Okay.
I should also add that the purpose of the lab is not to make samples, that's like any tiny amount of the time that's used, because it's not, it's very rare that we actually produce these prot, we need to ship prototype samples, so most of the time this is small operations, you know, small tests, and making tiny amounts of material that are for research purposes.
Now, you were using solvents, what solvent were you using at the prototype or the lab?
Most of the solvent is isopropyl alcohol, also known as rubbing alcohol.
Okay. Any other one?
Sorry, was there a question there at the end?
Yeah, was there any, besides the isopropyl alcohol, was there anything else, or?
I mean, we have, we have tested other kinds of solvents like glycol, glycol's something that you use in your radiator in your car.
Okay. Are you going to be using any of those in the new plant during the process?
No, and we provided a list of chemicals for the facility to the, I believe to the ZBA as part of the performance standards that's in the record.
An email between the DEC and Alatech on 12/3, subject, "Alatech Benzene Levels", the DEC asked, "I wanted to ask if you'd be able to email me the one slide in your PowerPoint presentation that showed the benzene cancer level, risk levels? I haven't seen anything here, is there information regarding that?"
Yes, we can provide that to you, that's available right on the U.S. EPA website.
Is it referenced, is it right here, Chuck?
Yeah, the, one of the, the third footnote in the table in the DEC report on page three, that third footnote refers to the EPA definition. But if you go to the EPA website, you'll find a whole page on benzene, and it will explain the various regulatory levels for both workplace safety and for off-site or for general public safety.
Was that your PowerPoint presentation, using those graphs, or this, were other graphs being used?
I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to, but I do, you know, definitely recall the correspondence with the DEC where they were asking for that, and then they immediately wrote me back two minutes later saying, oh, we found it.
Was that a slide that you prepared, or is it a slide?
No, it's just a link to a web, the EPA website.
Which website was that, I'm sorry? Which, EPA?
EPA.
Okay. A file was submitted to the DEC, the document supplied by the DEC contains an email from Charles Sorensen to the DEC. Subject, "Alatech Benzene Risk Levels," part of which read, "The emission quantities were estimates as follows, and this com information is Alatech confidential," and it says, "under which is handwritten, information redacted per POL Section 87.2." This is also written on the following page. That's the first time I've ever seen a redaction where it was blank and not blacked out, and I've handled redactions in state court, I've never seen a blank area. Usually it's blacked out, re-photocopied, and submitted, so you know how much material was redacted. Now, you're talking about emissions that you're claiming that is confidential, is part of your process?
No, the emission, the emissions are not confidential, that's what the, that's what's published in the DEC report. The information that was redacted was information specific to our process, so basically what's happening inside the pipes and what's happening inside the building. But it's not, the information about what's coming out of the catalytic oxidizer and going to the atmosphere is not confidential, and it's the same information that the DEC used to generate their report. So I guess why they redacted it the way they did, I have no, I have no knowledge of what they did.
But you're saying it's confidential?
The details of our process are, yes.
So these, you're talking about, you know, where it says the emission quantities were estimates as follows, and this information is Alatech confidential, which was written under, it said, handwritten, it said information redacted per?
These constitute the calculations and the details of our process that become the feed to the catalytic oxidizer, okay? Once it goes through the catalytic oxidizer and the catalytic oxidizer destroys it, that becomes the emissions from the building itself, and that is what's relevant to public safety, is what's coming out of the pipe.
Will any of the chemicals you're using in the process come out of the pipe?
No, they're destroyed by 99.5 or greater.
So there's still a 0.5% possibility that they come out? Are any of these emissions, I'll just ask you, you know, group of listing, any poisons, heavy metals, pesticides, herbicides, minerals, radioactive or radiological compounds?
None of those.
None?
The only compound of concern is the benzene, and that was shown to be 18,000 to 18,000 times below the limit.
Yeah, no, we look at everything, okay.
If you look, for example, at toluene, okay, and its health limit, it's less hazardous, it's something like over a million times below the limit.
I already answered that you do have a no sure on site, and it's a self-contained unit, the wood flour will be going directly in, so there's no chance of a dust explosion.
Correct.
All right. That was answered, it's five or seven days a week. Okay, that's all I have at this time, but after the public speaks, if there's any other things I, you know, request, I can still ask additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Okay, so it's now time for the public to speak. I have a list up here of the people who signed in. If you wish to speak after this, just please raise your hand, I'll call on you. Everybody who wishes to speak can speak. I'm reminding you once again, so that it's fair for everybody, the time limit is three minutes. I will gavel you out at the end of the time limit. So the first on the list is Mr. James K. Riley of Pearl River. Would you please come forward?
Good evening. James K. Riley, Pearl River, New York.
Address, please.
Here as a citizen. I'm here in opposition to this project, I do not believe it's appropriate in the town of Orange Town. It's a heavy industrial project, creating three known carcinogens, three known organic chemicals. There was a mistake in this process. This board, the first evening I understand that this hit your review, issued a negative declaration saying there's no adverse environmental. I find that to be not appropriate. We have two legal challenges from Mr. Brian Condon, which have both been filed with regard to this process. We want to protect the town, you know you want to protect the town. There's an issue. When the town attorney filed its answers to Mr. Condon, it said, "Well, the negative deck, it's not a big deal, you have no right to sue, because the zoning, the planning board can reverse and rescind that negative deck." And I would submit to you most respectfully tonight that you should rescind the negative deck and consider, continue a deeper review of this. Now, with regard to these issues, if you look at the SEACRA, State Environmental Quality Review Act, and you know it, I think, better than I do, you will find that they want to look at this globally, and it should be looked at globally with a long-form environmental assessment form. Long form visits certain things, visits community character. Does this heavy industrial use really belong in a research park? An 84-foot-high pyrolysis catalytic zeolite used creator of carcinogenic chemicals? Even more, there's something else in SEACRA. If you really dig into it, and I did have the leisure tonight waiting to get number one on the list to do so, guess what? Fear, community fear, psychological concerns of this community are to be analyzed in the negative deck, positive deck, environmental assessment process. Haven't seen that in a long time, but it's here. You have a community that is very, very concerned about this process. Three known carcinogens, three known products, which everybody, when they hear that name, runs. runs the other way. Also, on a planning basis, on a planning basis, we have the redevelopment of the entire Pfizer site. And if you drop this in the middle of it, Gresham's Law, you are running the economics of this site to the bottom of the pile. Because I don't want to put my high-priced corporate office next to somebody, with all due respects, Mr. Sadowski, is cooking benzene, xylene and tylooine. So I ask you, urge you, from your heart, to revisit this, to table this tonight, or to reconsider rescinding that negative deck, which I truly believe you all believe was premature. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Roger Scheiber. Says Roger Sheiber? Scheiber, I was correct? When you come up, please state your name and your address for the record.
Sure. Good evening, Roger Scheiber. I represent the Rockland Business Association, One Blue Hill Plaza, Pearl River, New York. S-C-H-E-I-B-E-R. I am here in support of the applicant. The Analltech project has been judged to be safe by the DEC, not particularly business-friendly organization, and two independent organizations. The project is critical to the development of the Pfizer campus as a major research and development site. This in turn has major benefit to the Nanyouet School District and the surrounding community and their taxing authorities. It is vital to our economic future that we find 21st century companies like Analltech to populate the Pfizer campus. The, the jobs created by this company, and hopefully many more to come, are knowledge-based industry jobs, exactly the type of jobs and companies we must secure for our economic future. The governor's Mid-Hudson Regional Economic Development Council judged the Analltech project to be one of the top thirteen designated as a priority project of the three hundred and thirty-eight other applicants considered in 2014. The Analltech project, along with others considered to be the initiative of, of the 21st century, gave our region, the Hudson Valley, the highest financial award in 2014, eighty-two point eight million dollars. When it comes to economic development and a project of this magnitude, the eyes of the economic development world are watching. It's a small world when it comes to these type of projects. It is an important step in changing the use of petroleum-based products to biomass products. It makes economic sense and is environmentally friendly. Any unreasonable delay will send up a red flag to the economic development world that Rockland is not a friendly place to locate their business in. This is the future of the economy, of the economic development of New York and Rockland. We need it, and we must support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Les Newman.
Les Newman, NEU, M-A-N-N, Nine Wood Glen Drive, New City, New York. I'm representing ICANN New York, which is the Hudson Valley Region's Clean Tech and Energy Technology Incubator. We've been in existence since 2005, and we work with NYSERTA, we work with Startup New York, we work with many colleges and universities around the state to incubate technologies such as Analltech. This technology and this research is very important in the clean tech world, and to that, we support this applicant wholeheartedly. I think this applicant has gone over and above all the requirements that have been asked it to do in order to get this technology underway and this research underway. This is not a commercialization project, this is a research project. That's exactly what this county has been asked to do. We are also representing part of Startup New York, which is a heavily promoted program by the state of New York. Startup New York specifically is targeting research and technology companies to relocate to New York State to do projects exactly like Analltech is doing. To deny this process would be to deny exactly the type of economic development that New York State is outwardly promoting globally, not just regionally, but globally. So, in the United States, over ninety-three percent of all new jobs are created by small companies, just like Analltech. We need it for our tax base, we need it for our economic development base, we need it for our community base. To misrepresent or misstate what this company is doing is a travesty. I support the technology, I support the applicant, and I say to this community, tonight is not just a referendum on Analltech, it's a referendum on research, technology and economic development in Rockland County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Joe Simos. Did I say that right?
Sure. S-I-M-O-E-S. I'm the principal planner for the town of Clarkstown, Penn Maple Avenue, New City. My appearance tonight follows up on a letter sent to you by the Clarkstown Planning Board on February twenty-seven, 2015. On behalf of the Clarkstown Supervisor Alex Gromak and the Clarkstown Planning Board, I'm here to voice the town's concerns regarding the expansion of Analltech's, Analltech's operations into the production of benzene, toluene and xylanes from renewable biomass. Clarkstown's apprehensions include the possibility of harmful air emissions and soil and water contamination. As recommended to the Orange Town Zoning Board of Appeals, we again suggest that Analltech be required to post funding and escrow for periodic air quality monitoring by an independent expert hired by Orange Town. This would help to ease residents' worries while demonstrating Analltech's confidence in their proposed operation and show their commitment to the health and well-being of the surrounding community. Air monitoring would also provide concrete independent data over time to definitively answer the question regarding possible air pollutants. In an effort to fully understand the impact of Analltech's operations on our community, we have requested information regarding the material being used and their planned routes of transport either to and from this facility. This information should include exactly what materials are being transported, including the biomass, the BTX and any residual waste, their quantities, containment measures and the likelihood of spill or subsequent contamination. We also request that Analltech provide their spill prevention procedures and response plan to any accidental spillage occurring either at the site or during transit. Analltech's location will likely result in this material being transported via the New York State thruway and traversing roads in Clarkstown to and from the facility. As a neighboring community, Clarkstown needs to formulate their own emergency response in case of a spill on our roadways and a plan to prevent injury to our residents. There's been some confusion regarding Analltech's proposed biomass source. We've heard reports of sawdust or konstover would be used by the company. We request that Analltech disclose exactly what biomass material is being used. The possibility that these materials will be obtained from chemically-treated wood, waste wood or corn that has been treated with pesticide is a real concern. What happens to these chemicals when they're introduced into Analltech's production process? It's my understanding that the New York State DEC has been aware of the environmental concerns surrounding this project and has recommended potential air emissions. We're requesting that Orange Town obtain a definitive answer from the DEC regarding any required permits for the facility, and especially whether a Part 360 permit will be required. The New York State DEC Part 360 permit allows for the operation of a solid waste management facility, which requires its own application process and raises a different set of concerns. Many questions remain regarding the safety of the materials and their impact on the surrounding area. Unfortunately, little opportunity to raise these questions was afforded prior to the issuance of a negative declaration by this planning board on September tenth, 2014, which is based apparently solely on the physical addition to the building. The most critical issues relate to the operation of the facility, which we believe has not been fully addressed as required by the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Thank you, Mr. Simos. Next up is Andy Stewart.
Good evening, members of the planning board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to, I have submitted a written comment to you, and I'm going to give you another one tonight, which is a copy of what I gave to the town board last night, making an argument that we really evaluate our process for industrial applications and consider drafting legislation for a temporary moratorium on industrial applications while we sort out what I think are a couple of flaws and how the town handles them. Flaws which I think have, have made it hard for this board to do, to do its work, although I think you've been extremely diligent about it. Most importantly, it's this question of the negative declaration, which, in my mind anyway, it happened very early, and so tonight, I believe it's premature to do a final approval, and I think that we need to look at the possibility of rescinding the negative declaration and doing SECRE on all the information which has come in, all the information. The negative declaration...
Mr. Stewart, I'm sorry, I'll give you a couple of extra seconds, but they are saying in the back they can't hear you, so can you please...
Yeah, thank you for, for helping me out with that. I want to make sure people can hear. The negative declaration, as I understand it, happened about a month before the zoning board meeting where performance standards are reviewed. And performance standards pertain to the machinery and the emissions and all these questions, which are in some ways of most concern to the community and the environment. And it strikes me as odd that we'd be having a secret review and a negative declaration before those performance standards are reviewed by the zoning board, which is an entirely different board which meets after the planning board. And I think that that represents one of several issues that we need to clean up, and it's not necessarily, obviously, the fault of the applicant, but I think that that process opens up this application and others to questioning as to the, sort of the thoroughness of the town's review. And for that reason, I would recommend tonight that the planning board consider rescinding its negative declaration and saying, "Okay, should we have had a long-form EAF? Should we have had an environmental impact statement? Should we have had the performance standard information in our hands before we made a secret declaration in the first place? Would that have made a difference to the process?" And if you think it would have, then I think it's incumbent upon you to, to take a second look at that secret declaration and possibly rescind it. So that's my main point that I wanted to make. I also wanted to say that the pollution monitoring question that's been raised is very important, and it's not just a question of the company's monitoring and sort of spot checks by the DEC, but that the planning board actually have an independent way of verifying that and have that agreement set up normally before a secret declaration is made, so that the community knows that there's independent verification of the claims being made by the company. And I would recommend that you take care of that before you give final approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next up is Amy Wertheim, or Wertham? Wertheim, correct?
Good evening. My name is Amy Wertheim, and I'm a resident of Pearl River for the past thirty-one years, 111 South Main Street, Pearl River, New York. I'm here tonight to ask the planning board to rescind their negative declaration to Analltech. There has been an extreme failure of oversight in this application and project. The Department of Health rescinded their responsibility to monitor air quality in April of 2014, citing that it is duplicated at the state level by the DEC. The DEC has outstanding questions that need to be answered by Analltech, yet here we are looking at the possibility of final approval. I was given permission to read part of Christopher Day's letter to the planning board this evening, and I'd like to share it. In part, here are his own words, and he did give me permission. "If a child near this site gets sick from breathing in harmful chemicals, it will not matter if the chemicals were produced for R and D or commercial purposes. This site should not be an excuse for lax oversight, and I am extremely disappointed that there is any sort of regulatory loophole at the state level that does not recognize this fact. The R and D to be conducted at the Pfizer property will not be in an enclosed room or a test tube, it will be an open smokestack venting to the area, and that reality must be recognized. Where there has been a failure of oversight by other agencies, the planning board must act. You are the only remaining check that our town has to ensure that this process is conducted safely. To this point, Analltech has disappointingly refused to disclose the full chemical content produced when synthesizing these materials, citing trade's secrets, and has opposed full, regular, independent testing of the exhaust. While I respect the need for them to protect their intellectual property, any professional will tell you that there are ways to protect against corporate espionage while still ensuring full environmental compliance and transparency. If Analltech is unwilling to accede to these reasonable requests, then I request that you disprove their application due to their unwillingness to ensure the safety of our residents." That's the end of Chris Day's content. "Please don't turn your backs on the concerns for health and safety of our community any longer. Thank you."
Thank you. Next up is Bruce Cowan.
My name is Bruce Cowan. I am a resident of Pearl River, New York. I reside at 119 Center Street in Pearl River. The Analltech Company has requested authorization for the construction of a facility on the grounds of the Pfizer campus in Pearl River. This facility, if approved, would be used for the pilot production of fuel to be developed from organic biomass. They have informed the public that this fuel will contain certain chemicals, including the carcinogenic chemicals benzene, toluene and xylene, all of which are highly toxic. As a result, I'm sorry, as a resident homeowner living in Pearl River for over forty years, I am particularly concerned about the emissions of these chemicals into the atmosphere less than one mile from where my house is located. However, I'm equally, if not more concerned, about the transportation of containers of these sample chemicals that will travel over the roads of Pearl River to their prospective customers to destinations throughout the United States and beyond. None of us likes to think about the possibility of an accident occurring involving the potential spillage of these chemicals. However, accidents can and do happen daily. I, for one, know the aftereffects of what can happen to people affected by such an accident. Approximately twenty-five years ago, my wife became the victim of just such an accident. This was a toxic chemical spill. She was exposed to the toxic carcinogens benzene and toluene and other toxic chemicals which occurred at her workplace. Her exposure to the fumes of these chemicals left her very ill with severe respiratory problems, nosebleeds, blisters in her nose and her throat. We obtained the material safety data sheets for these chemicals and sought help unsuccessfully for her from local doctors. We also contacted OSHA and the Rockland County Board of Health, both of whom investigated this situation. Their results were inconclusive. My wife was forced to leave her job of eighteen years where she worked in an administrative management position. The Board of Health referred us to the Toxicology Department of Mount Sinai Hospital in New York City. The doctor of toxicology there informed her that she suffered from multiple chemical sensitivity, which is incurable and can only be treated by avoidance of these chemicals. As a result of this exposure, my wife soon lost all sense of taste and smell. We took her to the Ear, Nose and Throat Hospital in New York, where she was tested to determine what could be done for her. She did recover, but her sense of smell became so acute that, to this day, she cannot be exposed to any fragrances, natural or synthetic, any type of chemical odors or contact with fabrics or many foods. I want the people here to understand that's...
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Next up, Nancy Caruso Prestipino.
Good evening. I live in the Nanyouet School District with my children and grandchildren, and I teach in Pearl River, so this issue is very important to me. I'm extremely concerned with Analltech's production of the toxic chemicals benzene, toluene and xylene, and the plan to expand their facility to include the eighty-five-foot smokestack vent to release these carcinogenic chemicals into the air. This seems to indicate a move from research and development. First, it's deceptive language to call a company that adds toxic chemicals into the air "green." Green technology protects the environment. What is the safe admissions level based upon? A two-hundred-pound adult, a one-hundred-pound teen, a thirty-pound toddler, still developing, or an unborn fetus? Safe adult amounts of medications for a two-hundred-pound adult would be lethal to a child. Is it so for these same chemicals? Are there really safe levels of neurotoxins on a child's still-developing body? If the board gives final site approval to Analltech, you'll be setting a precedent for this type of company at Pfizer and opening the door for other chemical companies... this type of company at Pfizer and opening the door for other chemical companies in our community. We must consider the cumulative effect of multiple safe levels on our children's health and our own. What is the rush to push this permit through? I implore you to take your time to get all of the answers needed to protect your constituents. Commission valid air quality reviews based upon actual emission samples, not the projected computer-generated values presented by the company, Aneltec. Seek out the answers to the questions posed by the DEC in January. There is way too much at stake to race into this decision. Please listen to and protect your community and think of the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Helen Shaw. I live at 260 East Central Avenue in Pearl River.
Can you bring that microphone closer, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
I have worked in the investment community for over 30 years, and if I was one of Aneltec's investors, I would be very concerned. If I had invested money in this company, I would be confused by the conflicting information I was reading. I would be asking Aneltec's management, what is the problem? You talked about a pilot plant being built in Springfield, Massachusetts back in 2009. That site didn't seem to work out, so in 2010, you looked at a site in Schenectady for the same pilot plant. Why did these other sites not work out? Were there issues with your plans? I am concerned that Aneltec was having issues finding a home because everywhere they went, their business came with too much risk to the surrounding community, that every community they approached took a pass on the deal. What did they see that we are missing? Without answers, Aneltec seems like a lousy investment, unless you're an investor that has been assured that things are further along than current press releases state and that the R&amp;D label is just that, a label. There appear to be questions, serious questions, with this company. While this community might increase its corporate tax base slightly with the addition of Aneltec, the lion chair of any profits will flow to investors outside this town who don't care about our residents. In the meantime, the real investors in Orange Town, represented heavily by the crowd behind me, will have the value of what is probably their biggest single financial investment, their personal home, in jeopardy. Couple of weeks ago, I was made aware of a family that was actively seeking to move to Pearl River. They're suspending their search now because of Aneltec. They can't be the only ones. What good is an increased corporate tax base if residential property values decline in response? Filling the Pfizer site with ratables is a priority in this town, which I applaud, but if we do so without the necessary due diligence that clearly identifies the risk, we stand to lose and lose big. It is not Aneltec's job to protect the citizens of Orange Town, but it is yours. Protect our investments. Protect our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Heather Hurley.
Hi. Heather Hurley, Pearl River, New York. Let's clear the air tonight, shall we? We are here as a united voice opposing the proposed expansion. We ask that Aneltec answer each and every question posed by the public and not pick-and-choose which ones that they would like to answer. You, as board members, cannot make a responsible decision on this without these questions being answered. From January 2014 through February 2015, Aneltec generated 5,800 pounds or 2.9 tons of hazardous waste. On August 19, 2014, Veolia picked up 931 pounds from this site. In July, 809 pounds of hazardous waste was picked up. How many 55-gallon drums does 931 pounds of hazardous waste equal? Piridine is listed on the hazardous waste ID chart, as well as benzene, toluene, and xylene, yet nothing in your statements ever addressed this chemical. Why is that? How much hazardous waste will you be generating in one day, one month, 18 months, 24 months, 36 months, as you scale up your production? This was never answered by Aneltec in some of the DEC's questions from January 15. Where is the information on the actual biomass suppliers Aneltec has been and will be using? They have been producing some samples for at least a year already, and a jar of cornstover wound up on a conference table in front of me on December 18, 2014, supported by a photo of it on the front page of the Our Town News. In an email from December 19, I had emailed their PR representative, and I said, "My concern is the other organic materials that are specifically mentioned in Aneltec's releases and from David's presentation yesterday. My question from yesterday about the Iowa corn and supplier and use of pesticides on that material still remains unanswered." And Jeff Johnson says, "I see your point on the pesticides completely. Your question on genetically-altered corn was a very good one. Dave is looking into it. Frankly, that had not been asked before." The MSDS sheet on sawdust Aneltec submitted to Orange Town is from a company that has never sold to nor sells to companies involved in pyrolysis. The VP of that company, Q Mac Solutions, said that they only sell to companies that drill oil and gas wells, not those involved in catalytic fast pyrolysis. They stated that the origins of sawdust and wood flour can come from different sources of wood, including wood waste and treated wood, and would be specific for each supplier. He, as well his Canadian operations manager, stated that they have never heard of Aneltec. On September 10, Jeff Whiting mentioned using 55 pounds of ground mass an hour, that's 1,320 pounds a day, and 481,800 pounds of biomass a year. How much waste will be generated from this amount of biomass, and how many pounds of biomass was used from January 2014 through...
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley.
Thank you.
Next up, Kathy Kelly.
Kathleen Kelly, Pearl River, New York. I come here today, as I have every time we've had a meeting, to discuss with you the health concerns. As a doctor of nursing practice and an engineer, I am well aware of what is going on here, and I have valid concerns that I need addressed. If any of my patients came to me asking me to make a healthcare decision for them, I would make sure that I had every piece of information available to me before I gave you my opinion or before I made a decision. I do that because I'm concerned about your health. You put your trust in me that I would make you healthy, and I can keep you healthy. So today, we're here because you're being asked to make decisions about our health, and by "you" I mean the members of the planning board. And you cannot take this lightly, and there are grave concerns about the information that you have at your disposal. Mr. Brunner, with all due respect, to say that there are no pesticides ever will be emitted from this site, I would like everyone to be reminded, in 2001, when Christine Todd Whitman told the United States that the air at the World Trade Center site was clean and it was safe. She said that because that's what she thought. She did not have all the information because that event had never been seen by our country. This event, this type of company, has never been seen or regulated by our county. We do not have the rules in place to make appropriate knowledgeable decisions for this company to receive final approval today. Any decision that is made today will be used as a precedent for the future. We have to take this seriously, and I absolutely appreciate, Mr. Young, your questions. They were correct. There is no 24-hour monitoring for the emissions coming out of this site. They stated it themselves in the September meeting. When they are throwing "it's a delta T temperature," I go back to my engineering days. That means a change in temperature. That does not mean what is coming out of the site. In addition, when people are saying that, "I don't, you know, the cornstover is clear" or "my wood pulp is clear," if you asked me to prescribe a medication for you and I told you it was safe, it's safe, trust me. The medication to treat your disease is safe, and then you said, "What medication am I going to get today?" I haven't chosen it yet. How can I tell you it's safe if you haven't, if I haven't even chosen it yet? These answers that we are getting are not truthful, and they are not complete, and I respectfully ask that we take the due diligence and the time to make sure that what we are saying and what we are voting on today is based on fact, and it is based on health.
The next person's last name I can't read. Roger Scheider? Schreiber?
You got me right.
Okay.
Sign up twice, against the rules.
Ms. Elizabeth Dudley? Ms. Elizabeth Dudley?
D-U-D-L-E-Y. Orangeburg, New York. Hello. First, I would like to take a moment and give thanks to the fact that we have a process in place where the residents can voice their concern and hopefully influence the outcome of these type of decisions. I know the Board has a very tough job, and at the forefront of their mind is the safety and well-being of our town residents. I am a wife of FDNY officer who worked on 9/11 and there the months after. I'm a mother, I'm a sister, I'm a friend, and I'm a U.S. Navy veteran. I am here tonight to have my voice heard against the proposed smokestack and processing of biomass materials by Aneltec. Here are the reasons I do not think Aneltec belongs in our backyard. I do not believe that the reports given to the Board were independent or extensive enough. What is a long-term effect? Did these people go to the site and see the operation in person? Did they measure themselves the output of the toxins? Or did they just rely on the info handed to them by Aneltec? They were also funded by Aneltec. I think that has a problem. I do not believe that Aneltec has been truthful and completely transparent about the process going on at the site. I do not think it is safe to store these highly flammable chemicals or put our residents at risk in the case of a fire or other mishaps. And I'm sorry, they happen. They happen all the time. I believe the zoning of this site is outdated, and this type of company does not belong in a residential location. You want to do R&amp;D? Go in the middle of Arizona, in the desert, where there's not kids playing in the backyard. Okay? Finally, I don't think we should allow large trucks carrying chemicals and biomass materials through our town streets. Look at the potholes right now, okay? Look at them. You guys do a good job, but still, some big truck takes a turn, there you go, we got a spill. In closing, I would ask the Board to seriously think about the evidence that they have been given. At the least, there should be further inquiry and transparency in this process. This is not the kind of business we want to attract for a region. In making the decision, please take into consideration our health, our children, and our safety. And in closing, I would like to state, a green company does not use toxins or produce toxins at any level, any level.
There's absolutely no way I'm going to be able to figure out what this signature is. So does anybody know who signed up between Denise Shorn and Ms. Dudley? There's, it looks like an Donnelly?
Donnelly.
Mr. Donnelly, if that's you, come on up.
What's your first name, sir?
Mark.
Mark Donnelly?
Yeah. Okay. My name is Mark Donnelly. I'm a resident of Laurel Road in Pearl River, 40 years, as a matter of fact, today. And I'm here because I'm a veteran, a two-tour Vietnam-era veteran, and I'm also a disabled New York City police officer. And this hearing, or whatever you want to call it, reminds me of something we did 25 or 30 years ago. My property abuts, okay? The back end of Ledley, or Pfizer now. And they were putting stuff in the air, nobody knew what. We petitioned and got the DEC in there, and they made it a parkland, like, all right? It's their property. Now, I got deer all over the place, turkeys, you name wildlife, a red fox, but that's in the back end of the property. Nobody's talked about that. Does that injure animals, too? I don't know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here because I'd like to request that the Orange Town Planning Board rescind the negative declaration provided to Aneltec at the September 11 meeting. I request that Aneltec's permit application be rejected. I am requesting the answers to the following questions, half of which I already emailed to the company, but I never received a response. Aneltec and the RBA has stated that the DEC has substantiated that this project is safe. Have they really determined this? If so, can they please state where they provided this information, where I can find it as a resource? I have written confirmation, of which I've already submitted to the Board, that from the DEC, on February 28, they stated Aneltec was still under review with their divisions of materials management. Also, the DEC based their information on a vent pipe with a diameter of three inches. I would like the company to confirm that because the architectural rendering says six inches. So if they based it on a different size, I'm not a scientist, I don't know if that affects the emissions. Also, if they are permitted to expand the facility, how much BTX in gallons will they be producing in a day, a month, and a year? How can we know the emissions without knowing the quantity? Also, is the biomass adulterated or unadulterated as defined by the New York State Energy Research Development Authority? Will the wood be harvested for the purpose of being used as a biomass, or is it waste wood? If it is waste wood, is it certified clean, as required by the New York State ERDA? How much BTX will they be able to produce from a ton of biomass? Will they be storing the BTX or any chemical waste in the additional storage space at Pfizer that they spoke about in the September planning board meeting? Will there be other locations on-site where chemicals will be stored? Again, I ask you to rescind the declaration and do a full environmental impact study to ensure the safety of the community that you represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Offiero.
In January, I attended a meeting similar to this, I guess it was with the zoning board, and I gave my opinion, which is that if Aneltec or any other business meets all requirements and the Board agrees that they met all requirements, it should be approved. And that conclusion, I still stand by it. What confuses me and what I don't understand is why there is so much opposition to this. I understand that they have to be monitored, they have to be scrutinized, but the impact of this is probably equivalent to no more than two, maybe five, new families moving into the county. If all the information we received is correct, the risk in other companies that are in this county are far greater than Aneltec, I don't hear an outcry. All right? I'm not going to name those companies, but there are other businesses and companies that have a far greater risk, okay? The risk for Aneltec as an R&amp;D facility is minimal. And when you think about it, what are we going to do? We're not going to build shopping centers or malls because they may be a target for terrorists. Of course not. We're going to put in procedures, we're going to put in measures that protect us, or at least try to protect us. There are no guarantees, but it's your job and our job to make sure that what's promised here is done. I have no problem with that, but it should be a fair shot. It should be a very fair shot. I think Aneltec and other companies that come to this county should be... I think Anelotek and other companies that come to this county should be welcomed. Yes, they should be scrutinized, as I said, they should be monitored, but they should not be turned away if they meet all the requirements that we as a society demand. Otherwise, we are setting a very dangerous precedent when it comes to businesses coming into here. I think we need companies to help us with the tax base. I think we need companies to help us hiring. I don't want to vote down a school budget because I can't afford the taxes. I don't want to leave Rockland County because the taxes are too high. Don't set that precedent. Hold them to their word. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Offiero. Joe Shorn? Joe Shorn, S-C-H-O-R-N.
Hi. Yeah, my name's Joe Shorn. I'm a Pearl River resident. And I'd just like to say that I am strongly opposed to this for the reasons stated by a lot of the other, my other neighbors in the town. But I also don't understand one thing. Now that we know that the applicant has said now it's, all of a sudden, now it's wood, before it was corn, now it's wood. And according to their own, you know, website, it says that this biomass is dried in ground. It seems to me that it's in direct opposition to the town of Orange Town's zoning laws. Section 4.42 actually specifically prohibits the reduction in processing of wood pulp and fiber. They're processing wood pulp and fiber. It's wood flour that they're going to be putting through some process. Isn't that against our town laws? I would hope that you all look that up. The other, it goes on, they also say their process then goes through this catalytic process. They say it's rapidly heated and the resulting gases are immediately converted into a hydrocarbon, according to their website. Section 4.41 of Orange Town zoning laws actually strictly prohibits the manufacture of coke and tar products, including gas manufacturing and explosives. Now, this law was intended, I'm assuming, to prevent the same kind of cooking and cracking of hydrocarbons that Anelotek is planning to bring into our own town community. I mean, maybe back in the day it was coal, but now we've moved into a new era where it's biomass. It's the same principle, though. That's the same thing that we were trying to avoid when the law was originally written, in my mind. So I want to know why this is even being allowed to get this far. I believe that it should be shut down at this point and rejected because it's going against our own town zoning laws. And in addition to all the other reasons stated, because they're going to be producing all kinds of negative, potentially harmful chemicals. And also, I think I'd also just like to quickly add that all the data that's been provided has been provided by the company. So you can, our, all these people here feel strongly opposed to this because, you know what? We just don't trust. If you say that you're going to do this, it's your data. We need data from somebody else in order to feel comfortable, and that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ken Cully? Cully, C-U-L-L-Y?
Yes.
Ken, first name?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Ken Cully. I'm a Nannewett resident for the last 32 years. My first question has to do with the review that was done by the ACABAR on November 20th. Question number five. The actual stack will be approximately two to three inches in diameter and a stainless steel pipe, much smaller, much smaller than noted on the plan. The plan shall be revised to note the actual size to be constructed. In the event that the pipe is larger than noted on the presented plan, the applicant must reappear before ACABAR. The plan's from December 15th. It's a six-inch pipe. I think that should go before the board again, if I'm reading this correctly. Number one. Number two, and a young lady just brought that up. When they gave the, their details to be tested, did they use a three-inch or the six-inch pipe? I don't know if it makes a difference. I would think it does. I don't know if they did or not. Another question. Mr. Whiting, I believe is name, at the first meeting that I went to in September, was asked about burning wood. Was there any odor? He could not answer that question. I'd like that question answered tonight. If we're burning wood, will there be an odor as a big fireplace being burned? Second thing, if the plant is shut down and the computer thing sets off and the plant is shut down, will we be notified? Another thing, burning new products, will we be notified in a year from now when they change the product from trees to god knows what? I've also read they have international sources. Are the international sources going to be identified? Will we be notified? The wood fiber that they're taking from all around the country, why don't we know the company? If this is such a well-planned-out event, we should know the company, we should have the opportunity to go online and do research. It's the age of the internet. We should know what's going on. Next, the Nannewett Fire Department. Have they been notified and consulted? Because god forbid there's a fire, the houses in my neighborhood will burn first. We should be notified, there should be a countywide response and a countywide plan in effect. And before you give me a look, you said it yourself, sir, this has never been done before. We're experimenting with flammable, dangerous materials, and I feel it is reckless to approve. The economic guy that was here, he says we're going to set up a red flag? I hope we do, because everyone should know we do not want refinerys in our residential neighborhood. Our startup New York guy, startup New York supports a refinery in a residential neighborhood. We oppose fracking, but we're going to support a refinery in New York, right where we live? Not a good idea. All right? And if you ought to believed, if this is, if this is...
Sir, sir, I'm going to ask you to address the board and not the audience.
Sorry. If this is to believed that the international community will see this as an example, god forbid that we approve this, and they see this as a place that they come in and set up these kind of operations in residential neighborhoods. They don't believe. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, there's no way we should be discussing building a plant that builds nothing but carcinogenic products in a residential neighborhood. Thank you very much. I hope you plan to oppose it.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Sullivan?
Tom Sullivan, Pearl River. Good evening, gentlemen. Okay, good evening. I'm not going to take up too much time. I think most of the facts that people have let you guys know should be enough that you can make a decision tonight. Like, maybe it's time to take a step back and think, maybe we're making this a little too easy on them. Maybe it's time to take a step back and say, what were we thinking? The short-form environmental statement for a chemical plant? We know that the Rockland Department of Health won't protect us. They've rescinded their duties on this one. The DEC has said that these guys are exempt from permitting requirements, and now, after last night, we know that the town board is also not in a place where they can protect us either. It's only you. You're our last hope here. Please don't let us down. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy O'Reilly?
Hello, good evening. My name is Wendy O'Reilly.
You have to bring that mic up.
Sure. My name is Wendy O'Reilly. I live at 8 Turner Road in Pearl River. Good evening. I would just like to express my concern. No matter how the hazardous chemicals, toxic chemicals will be stored, the bottom line is that the potential for disaster is real. We, the good citizens of Orange Town and Clarkstown, do not want this risk in our town. With that being said, I pose the following questions. The hazardous material and chemicals being trucked into and out of our town through the streets where our children play is highly flammable and volatile. How would an emergency such as an equipment malfunction, chemical leak, fire, or an explosion be handled? That question hasn't been clearly answered for me. What specialized training would be given to the first responders? Who would pay for such hazmat training for the Pearl River Volunteer Fire Department or other fire departments? How would we, as a town, deal with such catastrophic events, such as an explosion, because the potential is real? Catalytic converter malfunction, again, a real possibility? Or a chemical leak? Let's be proactive rather than reactive. I speak for the parents of Orange Town and Clarkstown when I ask, how are we going to protect our children from breathing or ingesting through water or soil BTX and other carcinogenic chemicals? How? I just, that's just a real question, how? To have BTX and other chemicals released into our air and water is a violation of our human rights. Number three, the human right to life. We all have the right to live and to be safe. We all want to be safe and healthy and feel that way in the town we chose to live in. Please listen to the public. We are intelligent taxpayers and voters and good people who care about this great town. Please say no to Anelotek. I just have one more thing to add. The comparison with the cars that keeps coming up, the comparison of BTX and other chemicals, really doesn't seem like an accurate comparison. We don't keep our cars running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Just like that, you know, may be clarified. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else on the list. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like? I got it all. Yes, please come forward. Not the one on the, Ms. Larkin?
Good evening. I'd like everybody to know that I'm a tree hugger, so...
I'm sorry, Ms. Larkin, we'll start over again. Your name and your address for the record?
Eileen Larkin, Palisades, New York. I'm here listening to what, wood flour, which is basically the yeast of what you need to produce the end product here, which is supposedly going to lead to reduce global warming. But I'm looking at your source, which is trees, and I believe that the deforestation leads to global warming. So I guess my hours, my questions are to the applicant. How does a tree become wood flour? And what is the equivalent of number of acres of trees that are required in the overall plan to produce this product, which is supposedly going to lead to the reduction of global warming, which is still out there as a scientific question? I'd like to know where this, is this product going to be made domestically? Is it going to be an imported product, such as from China or some other country? Is it going to be, are the trees, what type of trees do you need? Is it an aspen tree? Is it a maple tree? Is it a cedar tree? What you, what, in other words, when I buy hectares flour, I know where it comes from. I want to know where your wood flour is actually going to be produced and then make its way over to Pearl River. We saw with the issue of fracking that people were encouraged to sell their properties so that they would get money from the companies who wanted to do the fracking. Will something like the use of trees be encouraging people to deforest their lands? In Palisades recently, Lamont is on the board for wanting to deforest six acres for solar energy. So anyway, my question is to tell us all where your yeast, which I consider you need wood flour in order for you to go ahead with this project. We've listened to all the questions about the benzene, xylene, and... I want to know where this wood flour is produced. Are the trees domestic trees? Will they be imported from China? We saw what happened with the sheet block that came in from China a number of years ago. That was, had to be ripped out and discarded somewhere. Another issue with environmental issues. Your hours of operation are seven days, 24 hours. Why? This is a residential town. Most companies are here five days a week, eight hours a day. I also, I don't know how to say it more strongly, is that...
Thank you, Ms. Larkin.
You must tell us the source of this...
Thank you, Ms. Larkin.
Thank you, mister.
In the back first. I'll get to everybody. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Laura Woodward. I live at... W O O D W A R D, Laura. And I live at East Carroll Street in Pearl River. I live on East Carroll Street in Pearl River. And while we are concerned about emissions, I think there are a lot more questions and bigger issues. One big question for me is, as times have changed, should we be amending or putting restrictions on exactly what should be researched at this facility? Dr. Ernest Letterly purchased the 99-acre dairy farm in Pearl River in 1907 and moved much of his research and manufacturing operations in bacteriology and biochemistry from New York to this site. In 1930, the facility was renamed Letterly Laboratories, a division of American Synaamine, which became Wyeth and is now Pfizer. And it now encompasses 550 acres and has approximately 40 buildings. And it is not without incident through those years, which I think many people know. Residents fought against that to make sure that we were safe, and here we are, I feel, in the same position. Though Pearl River was once a town of farms, mills, and factories, it isn't any longer, and research facilities have also come a long way. Times have changed, and Pearl River and the surrounding area has changed. We are now a dense suburb, no longer a rural area, and the land zone for a research facility has grown literally feet from some residents' backyards, not only in Pearl River, but in Nannewett as well. It is within a very short distance of homes and schools in a heavy-populated area. And we have questions. What should be allowed to be researched here? What is safe? What should be trucked through our streets? We have heard phrases such as allowable levels in regard to emissions, but it seems more like assumptions and theories. I want to know, how is it really going to be detected and monitored? Is there going to be an independent company that's going to be monitoring this every day so we really know what is coming out of it? What are the disaster plans if an accident occurs with one of these trucks on our roads or at the facility? This would not be happening in a rural area any longer. Anelotek is a young company, and I actually applaud their efforts in furthering scientific technology, but I don't want to be one of their possible guinea pigs. The Pearl River Pilot Plant, as everyone has heard, is producing benzene, toline, and xylene. These are hazardous chemicals. BTX are in a class of chemicals known as volatile organic compounds, or VOCs. VOC chemicals easily vaporize or change from a liquid to a vapor, gas. The VOC vapors can travel through the air and move through contaminated groundwater and soil as vapors, possibly impacting indoor air quality in nearby homes or businesses. This does not sound like the type of material that should be produced in close proximity to homes and schools. We do not live in a perfect world, and we know all too well that acts of God...
Thank you. In the back. Sir, up to the microphone, please. What was your name?
John Antonelli.
I'm sorry, Mr. Antonelli. Go ahead, onto the, onto the...
A-N-T-O-N-E-L-L-I. First name is John. I'm a Nannewett resident. My name is John Antonelli. I've been employed in law enforcement in various ranks for 25 years. I was also a 9/11 first responder and spent much time at that site. I remember when then EPA Director Christie Todd Whitman told all of us that the air around Ground Zero was not dangerous to breathe, so I've been lied to before. As a result of my exposure, I am undergoing continuous medical monitoring and treatment at Mount Sinai Hospital. I hope we're not being lied to by Anelotek. There's too much at stake. I have attended far too many funerals for my brother and sister first responders that died from the poisons they were exposed to. I think more exposure to chemicals in a residential area cannot be a good thing. I don't want to attend funerals of my neighbors. I cannot feel good about the so-called independent studies that were done thus far when it has been shown that Dan Sullivan of the Zone Board assisted in the wording of those reports. I am... I am therefore opposed to this project. I don't think it's right for our health or our community. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'm sorry for missing you, Mr. Antonelli.
Fran Ryanstein, R-A-N-S-T-E-A-N. That's what you're appointing. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think what we all owe you and what you started the meeting with, Mr. Chairman, was being civil. And all of us here, I'm here 48 years, and I worked, when there were still kids going to school in large numbers in South Orange Town, I worked for the district. And that went away. And the only thing that's constant here is change. And we do want to make sure it's the right kind of change for the right reasons at the right time. And people talked about that. And there's so much talent in the room. There's talent in Orange Town, and there's talent in the county. We want to live here. We want to enjoy a quality of life. So I would ask of myself what we owe you and ask it of everybody else. We need to be civil. Being collaborative would not be a bad idea. And we need to work on this together with all the talent that we have because all the problems we're going to face are problems of change and problems of technology. That's guaranteed. We need to be together in this or Orange Town and the county are going to be hurt. None of us wants to see that happen. So we need to make a commitment to you to make this happen, whatever issues there are with David and Anelotek. I've gotten to know him and the company. I've gotten to know some of the people tonight and hear the urgency of their issues. Nobody comes here who's not very, very serious. If we work together to maintain this quality of life and to sustain the right kind of change, we can do a darn good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank all the board for listening to us tonight.
Mr. Maroni, could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Yes, Pat Maroni, Wan-Brightwood Avenue, Pearl River, New York. I've lived in the neighborhood for 50 years. Been a Rockland County Legislature for 25 years. I represent the people of Pearl River in this particular area and also the people in Nanyouet. And I have to ask you tonight to consider some of the things that has been said earlier. We have, we had scheduled a meeting in the county legislature to, on this particular subject, but unfortunately, the weather did not oblige in the last couple of weeks. We want to present the facts that we've come up with to the board before the meeting tonight, but that did not happen, unfortunately. But we are scheduled a meeting on March 31st. So I would hope you would rescind any decision that you have made tonight for, until, after that hearing. Because I would like, and I haven't heard it here tonight, I haven't heard it at any meeting, the Department of Health are very much involved in this process as far as permitting the trucks that deliver these chemicals from in and out of Pearl River. And that's basically our main concerns of what happens to these, these chemicals and the transportation. And again, the residents of this Pearl River, they've gone through this before, as one gentleman said, and we're going through it again. I, I think that the concerns here are very, very much aware, the people are very much aware of some of the problems that are attached to this. Nobody wants to, nobody wants to, if there's a good company, nobody wants to deny them their rights. And we won't deny them their rights. But I think there's more questions to be asked, there's more things to be done, and I want the DEC, we haven't had any person from the DEC at any meeting, we haven't had any person from the Department of Health, the Rockland County Solid Waste Authority, we have had nobody there for their expert opinions on this particular issue. And I urge you not to make that final decision, at least until after March 31st, until we get those people to testify at the Rockland County Legislature on March 31st at 7:00. And I appreciate it very much, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Pat Nealon, 54 Harding Street, Bloavell, New York. Sure. N-E-A-L-O-N. I just want to address the, the board, and I'm a licensed real estate broker, serving Rockland County and in particular Bloavell, the Pearl River area for over 35 years. I'm retired New York City firefighter, and I'm well aware of, of what goes on in our town. And I do recall, like Pat Maroni just mentioned, what happened back in the day with Letterly and the cancer scares. And the cancer scares were in all the newspapers. In fact, if I'm not wrong, they were on 60 Minutes. And that brought a whole lot of public to, to understand more what's going on today with carcinogenics and, and what have you. Now we have the same situation developing all over again. A whole new group of people in town and a lot of people concerned about property values. Well, I know this much. I recall 30, 35 years ago when the property values tumbled. And part of it was due directly to what happened at Letterly. It was in the newspapers all the time. Our town wrote story week after week after week after week after week. Dead horses, dead animals, all kinds of nonsense. And again, the same thing in a different fashion. I will say this, my opinion is, if indeed this goes through, property values in the Pearl River area, the Nanyouet area, the Clarkstown School District taxes will continue to rise, will be lost. I mean, they're just going to be devastated again. We're going through a tough period now with real estate in this country, and of course, to add something like this at this point in time, I think would be devastating to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on.
Hello. My name is Mary Gade, 50 Railroad Avenue, Pearl River. I'm here on behalf of Evans Park Elementary School, and I'm here on behalf on Lincoln Avenue Elementary School. I'm here on behalf of five, six, seven, eight, and nine-year-olds. Lots of them. Lots of them for the next hundreds of years. I cannot believe that they are not the first concern. I cannot believe that any of the other details matter. They don't. They don't. The five, six, seven, eight, and nine-year-olds for the next 100 years are the ones who matter. Not the, not any of the other details. Both schools are a stone's throw away from the Pfizer plant and Anelotek plant. That's one. Two, I left two children at home sleeping. And my husband and I are considering moving out of Pearl River should this go through, and so will our $10,000 worth of tax a year. Three, the EPA, the FDA, and the DEC are an absolute farce. And they have been, they have been classified as a farce by the New York Times, the Los Angeles Times, the Washington Post, the Boston Globe, month after month in articles in the last year, showing the discrepancy between their standards and international standards, especially those of the EU. If we measure ourselves as being the industrial nation of the world, how can we possibly, possibly measure the DEC, the EPA, and the FDA as standards by which we want to live when most of the chemicals that they, that they permit in use in agriculture and pesticides have been entirely banned by the European Union, entirely? I, I can send you every possible link to the New York Times in the last three months to clarify and to, to support that. You, you work for us. We are the voters. And that's the only point that matters. We are the voters. And that's the only point that should matter, and we vote no. We don't want them here. Full stop.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Brian Condon. I live in Nanyouet, and I also work in Nanyouet, and I happen to be the attorney for the Stop Anelotek movement. There are currently two Article 78s pending before Robert Berliner, who's a judge in the, in the Rockland County Supreme Court, and I would ask that you consider that in determining your negative declaration, or at least rescinding it tonight. Your very able counsel, Robert Magrino, said to my, in my opposition papers, in his opposition papers, the negative deck can be rescinded. It was only an initial issuance. Well, that was done in September. Mr. Dell, at a community meeting in December, asked very good and very pointed questions with regards to the environmental impact. Why those questions weren't asked in September and yet were asked in December? I want to know where those answers have been.
Mr. Dell, you're not going to respond to the, well, Mr. Dell, no, that's not, Mr. Dell, that's not the way we set up the meeting. You were late. That's not going to happen. Mr. Dell? Mr. Dell? Mr. Dell, you're not being recognized. Go ahead.
I, I hope my time will not be adversely affected.
I'll let you go.
The, the, the issue is, and Mr. Magrino correctly said that the, our Article 78 challenge was premature, that this board has the right and could rescind its negative deck. If you take 5% of the questions that were asked today, and I submit to you that 100% of the questions were valid, thought-provoking questions, if you take 5%, you have to rescind the negative declaration because all the answers have not been answered. All the questions have not been answered. Now, the zoning board comes up with its, with its performance standards review, and Anelotek claims this is an independent assessment. First of all, the DEC, in a letter to Heather Hurley, said, "Our issuance was not a report." Mr. Seduski mentioned five times tonight, the DEC report. The DE said in their own writing, "There is no DEC report." So I want to hear about, I don't want to hear about DEC, DEC reports. Secondly, the independent testing, Chairman Sullivan has emails to Triumvirant, who is the company that was independent, as to what he would like them to say. Also too, and I don't know the answer to this, Leonard Feroldi is a sitting member of the planning, of the zoning board? There's a gentleman at Triumvirant by the name of Eric Feroldi. Maybe it's a coincidence, maybe it's not. All I know is those questions have to be answered. We're not asking you to turn them down directly right now, but a long form should absolutely be done when you have hundreds of people and thousands of residents that are concerned about the health, safety, and welfare of their community. Thank you.
Mr. Brenner, do you have a response to any of these? Sure. I'm going to call a five-minute recess. I think that's a good idea. Thank you. And we'll be back in five minutes. Okay, so I'm going to ask for, thank you. Mr. Brenner, what say you? What do you want to, okay. So at this point, Mr. Dell was late. He is asked for some time to address, to ask some questions. I told him I would give him the liberty to do so. He said he would keep it brief. After Mr. Dell speaks, then I'm going to let the applicant speak, and then we will, we will speak again, the board. Okay? So, Mr. Dell, go ahead.
Well, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak. My apologies for not being here. My apologies for not being here in a more timely manner. I was actually in Europe, and the airports where I were were closed down with a blizzard yesterday. I literally came in, had the driver drop me off here in front of Town Hall, so my apologies there. Second, my question has to do with a couple of things. First of all, in the first meeting we had, there was a, an indication, at least from what I, why I understood it, that there was nothing toxic being given off at all by this place. And that included, Mr. Whiting said, first part of the process generates CO2 and CO, and it generates some minor hydrocarbon emissions that are thermal oxidized. I say, then I said afterwards, this is all in the record, anyone can read that. Then when we had the meeting elsewhere, questions were asked and new information arose, and that's another question. Now, the main thing I want to talk about here, there were some questions about the actual processes that are happening and the fact that this is in the patent process, and it was subject to nondisclosure. What I wanted to know from the applicant, does that mean that these, this information is not available for the public or that you cannot discuss it?
Okay. So, Mr. Dell, just so that we're fair of what you're going to do, okay? You can ask the questions, and at the end, the applicant can answer.
Absolutely.
But we're not going to do the one question to the other thing, okay?
No, okay.
Let's do it that.
Because I wanted to state for the record that when you go online to United States Patent Office, and I myself have 12 patents, two in the United States, so I'm certainly familiar. If you go under the applicant name of Anelotek, both the applications are there, and they've been published as applications for some time. So in case anybody wants to take a look, they are actually in the public domain. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Is that all you have, Mr. Dell?
That's all I have to say for now, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dell.
Okay. So, Mr. Brenner, you've heard the.
We would like to, we would like to answer some of the questions, which I think the audience was interested in and the board may be interested in, so I want to turn it over to.
I'm Libby Bowen. I work for AMAC, Foster Wheeler.
Okay, I'm sorry. What is that? I know what it is, but.
It's an engineering and consulting company.
And you work for Anelotek?
We're a consultant to Anelotek, yes.
That's what I meant. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. So, we went through the questions during the break and sort of put them into some major categories, and I think we can answer some of the, I'll try to answer some of the more straightforward questions, and then if you have other sort of process-specific questions, you could go back to, to David and Chuck. But one of the major categories of questions from the public was, were safety issues, and that included both emissions and then sort of transport and management of materials. So, to address the, the basic emissions questions, those, one of the specifics that was asked was, how could we know that this process was safe if we don't know how much material is going to be produced? And the answer to that is that the information that was given to the DEC and the calculations that were done were based on a maximum production rate as if the facility was going to be operating at 100% for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which is not the case. So despite our information that went to the DEC sort of being the worst-case scenario, the results still showed that the potential emissions were below any regulatory threshold of the DEC by 18,000 to 18,000 times. So that's how we know that the process will be safe without knowing exactly how much material will be produced. And then another question was about the volume and amount of material that will be produced. And the answer to that is, the, the facility doesn't anticipate producing more than 20 gallons of liquid a day. So that kind of leads into our next category of transport of materials to and from the site. The amount of truck traffic to and from the site, they expect to be no more than two trucks a week, likely one for deliveries and one for material leaving the property. No more than 300 gallons of liquid will be stored on the site at any time. So that is, you know, less than 10% of what would be stored in an average gas station gas tank.
3%.
3% of what would be stored in a, a gas station gas tank. So those are small volumes, and we do understand that it's important, and they are, there are safety precautions that need to be taken to transport those materials. So the company that will be used to transport the material has the proper certifications to transport the materials, and the first responders in the town are trained in the type of chemicals that they'll be transported, so there's no special training that's needed for that. Anelotek also has a hazmat response company that they've identified as somebody that they would use if they had a problem at the facility. And then in terms of exposure to, to impacted soil and groundwater, there's no. And then, in terms of exposure to impacted soil and groundwater, there's no impact to soil and groundwater associated with operation of this property, and there was no indication from the DEC that that was a concern. So, so, from a day-to-day exposure standpoint, there isn't a concern about, about impact to soil and groundwater in the area of the site. The other specific question about the vent stack and emissions issue is that this sort of changing diameter of the vent stack. And the final answer on that is that the vent stack will be a three-inch diameter pipe, and that's consistent with the data that was given to the DEC. So, their calculations were done based on a three-inch diameter pipe.
And that would mean that you don't have to go back to Akabor, because you, you're keeping it at three inches?
No, Akabor said we can make it almost any diameter size. We show it as six inches, but they said we can make it any size.
Akabor said, "If it's more than six, they got to go back."
Okay. Fine. So, that's cleared up. If it's more than six, they have to go back. Go ahead.
So, there are a lot of questions about the feedstock, and I might need some backup from Chuck on this one. But generally speaking, it's a commercially-produced, it is commercially-produced for sale, and from untreated wood that was American, originates in the United States. Any material that is brought onto the property will be transported, and an MSDS will be provided as required to Anelatech. And the, the material that they bring onto site will also be subject to permitting through the DEC. So, regardless of what source they use for this material, it will fall under the DEC permit that will be in place for the site. And so, they are still, we are still going through the permitting process. And the permit that is being applied for, through the DEC, would also allow use of the corn stover and sugar bagasse. But they've expressed, Anelatech has expressed that they will only be using the wood flour for the first year. But the permit would allow use of the other materials. And that brings back to sort of one final issue of the potential for pesticide emissions. If the corn stover, first of all, the corn stover is treated and cleaned before it's brought to the facility. And if there were any residual pesticides on the material that was used to, as feedstock, pesticides break down at a temperature where they would not survive treatment through the system, so they also would be removed by passing through the Cadduck, so they wouldn't be present in the emission stream. So, I think those were the, the main things that we wanted to cover here. If you have other questions after listening to the public, you know, please let us know, and one of us will try to answer.
Okay.
Want to ask the board members to comment, maybe?
What do you think, Mr. Young?
I'm, I could approve this project right now, but I, I am definitely in favor of requesting a long EAF. And I, that's my, going to be my vote right now. However, however, the applicant has shown sufficient proof to me, in terms of their analyses, and that were done, which is why I'm leaning towards, why I was leading towards approving this project. But I would like to see a long EAF done. The applicant has done a lot of work in a short period of time, and this project by no means has been streamlined to go through. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I think that the majority of the board is in favor of the long EAF form, in speaking to them. I also think that we should be able to hear as Mr., Pat Maroney, sorry, Mr. Maroney, that Mr. Maroney said about letting the, have their meeting and have them comment on it as well. I think it's important for them. So, that's where we're at right now.
Okay. I do wish to just remind the board, not remind the board, but just refresh what I had said before. The short form, with the amount of information that was given in the performance standards, will issue more information than the long form will ever issue.
That's fine, Mr. Brenner. We understand that.
I just want the board to know, you're really not going to get any kind of...
But we're also trying to alleviate the fears of the public, and one of the things that everybody asked for, one, the majority of the people that spoke said that we should table it and get the E, the long-form EAF. So, that's what we're going to ask for.
Under those circumstances, I have no option.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Therefore, I will ask for a continuation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Before everybody gets up, let me tell you what that means. We are not voting on this tonight, okay? We are going to continue it to the April...
22nd.
22nd meeting, which is, I guess, about six weeks. Is that right? Four weeks? Okay.
Whoa, 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 no, no, no. Please. We will give you the short form tomorrow, long form tomorrow. We have it already made. We will give you the long form tomorrow. We already have it done.
It's not going to be in two weeks, because in two weeks, we have another interesting evening. So, that's not going to happen. So, I don't care after that. You're going to have to speak to Cheryl and get on the meeting.
We have five hours.
Is it Hillside?
No.
Oh, then, by all means.
Please, we will...
When?
It's the 31st.
Yeah, so, we want the county to weigh in. That's the 31st.
Well, you know, you know, I have to respect Mr. Maroney. He's a legislator in, in what he's done, but it's his legislation, of which he was a participant.
Mr. Brenner, there's no sense in even getting upset about this, okay? Why do you bother? We are, you are, listen, Mr. Brenner, you already heard what Mr. Young said, okay?
Yes, and we will give you the long form tomorrow.
I think that you would see, it would alleviate more of the fears of the, of the public if you do what we ask you to do. Don't argue with us, and then come back, okay? Let the good people hear what you've done, have some more comments, and then we will move forward. Yes?
It may be productive if the board members have anything they want to mention it now, so that, on what you said, no, no, I mean, open up to comments about questions that they may have, or additional information that they might want us to come and say.
The only thing I would like to see the applicant, you know, come up with some type of escrow account for regularly independent air quality testing by a professional air quality expert chosen by the planning board for a determined period of time that we can determine at a later date.
Or the building department.
Yep. And that if it did exceed the allowable rates, the plant would shut down, a full investigation would occur, and remedial measures will be taken before allowing the plant to begin operation again. So, just as an extra precaution.
I agree with that. Mr. Warren, you have a little question? Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, similar comment. I don't know. I'm comfortable.
What I heard from the community, that if there was some kind of constant monitoring, that the town had access to the constant monitoring of what was being emitted from the plant.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Mandell?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'd like to know exactly what the, the shutdown, you say it's continuous monitoring. Is it a temperature drop that it monitors, or is it the, the actual BTX chemicals that come out? So, I'd like to know more about that. I'd like to know the type of monitoring equipment you're using, specifically which company, what type it is, what it does. Let's go through everybody's notes here. Oh, and the local departments do need hazmat training. They have to know exactly what type of chemicals. I was an onsite coordinator, which is under federal jurisdiction. They have to know exactly what it is. They have to know what chemicals might be spilled. They have to know exactly what they have to wear. So, that, that has to be done as part of it.
You might want to make sure that Nanyuette is involved in that, too. I didn't ask that question before, but make sure that they're involved.
There are two fire departments in Pearl River. Both of those should be involved, so it should be the three departments. Oh, and let me see. The question one person asked, the 931 pounds of hazpeterial, how many pounds of BTX were produced from that? I think that was from your pilot or your lair plant, whatever the semantics are on that. And somebody else asked about the Springfield and Schenectady sites. If you have any information on that, that would be appreciated. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Dell?
Also in the same line at the other member's...
Okay. Mr. Dell is in agreement with everybody else on the, on the board? He wants to make it on the record?
Yes, but I also want to say just two quick things, sir. First of all, a generic comment, that many times, limits are set on toxic materials, and they're set at such a point where it's so bad, it should be illegal. It doesn't mean that you necessarily would want to have anything anywhere near that threshold in your neighborhood. That's first. Second of all, I think the monitoring system is, seems to be critical here. I want to know specifically the manufacturing of the monitoring, with the battery backup for that, et cetera.
Mr. Mandell asked, I don't mean to interrupt you, but Mr. Mandell just asked the same thing.
Sure. Okay. Then, there's another person also doing it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Okay. So, that's it for this evening. Thank you all for coming out. Oh, wait. Sorry. Yeah, he asked for a continuance. He formally asked for a continuance, which is what he has to do. So, we are, what? When are we going to do this again? Two weeks. Oh, April 26th. Sorry. Hey, stop. Go. What's that?
April 22nd.
April 22nd.
Thursday. Thursday.
Okay. We'll put it off. April 22nd. Thank you.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. ...[1487.01]
We can raise it.
Okay. Um, from Bruce Peters, the applicant still needs to apply a PV decision number 13-45. Mr. Brenner?
I don't have it in front of me, but we will read it.
Rocket County Department of Planning? There's four?
I don't know what they are.
Okay. Well, I'll read them to you then, okay? An updated review must be cleaned by the Rocket County Department of Highways, no problem. Updated review by drainage, okay? Updated review by the New York State DOT. Last one. The minutes from the November 5, 2014, zoning board of appeals meeting indicate that the applicant has agreed to remove the shed storage trailers shown on the site plan. The sheds are still shown on the site plan, with no reference to being removed. The site plan must be updated with a map, no indicating that these structures will be removed as required by the Orange Town Zoning Board of Appeals.
The revised site plan was shown, it's going to be...
Thank you. Rocket County Department of Planning? Uh, hold on. I just read that, didn't I?
Yes, it's a duplicate, I'm sorry.
Duplicate?
Yeah.
Okay. Rocket Health? No, no needs. Uh, Department of Highways? Three comments. You need me to read them to you?
I have no information, sorry. Do I have to add five?
Uh...
Five.
No.
Okay.
You have to meet them. We don't override highway.
That's correct, we don't.
Okay. Town of, uh, Orange Town, Bureau of Fire Prevention, has six. We don't override them either.
Right.
And then there's notes from Akebor. From the, uh, from their meeting.
Right.
As part of the record. Okay. So that's, and then Booker Engineering's, uh, not objecting to it being, uh...
We have a letter from them.
Yes, and with their two comments. Okay, Cheryl? Okay. So, um, Mr. Dell?
Uh, no comments, although my question asked them off with, uh, with the...
Mr. Young?
Uh, I agree with Mr. Dell. One few questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Bond?
I have so long awaited event, so...
God, yes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Mr. Sweeney?
Mr. Mandell?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I was, uh, wants to team it up. Yes, thank you. I had it up already. I was over there today, now you have access, uh, from the back of your property going all the way around to the west side of Maria's Deli. Is that going to be open? Or is that going to be closed? The fence in the back?
It will be open. There will also be probably opening in the fence for the, with the...
That's what I was asking, because I, yeah, an opening in the fence, because the alleyway between Maria's and, uh, and the saloon is only three foot four inches at the air conditioning, which would be horrendous trying to get people out. But you're going to have full access around Maria's, and you're going to have an opening in the fence, that's fine. Good job. Yeah, good luck. Oh.
We're removing that piece of equipment, too.
The air conditioning?
So that'll be clear.
Okay. So it'll only be, it'll be six something, because you still have the gas meters there. Oh, okay.
Please note that the opening where the MTA lot is, is going to be under our control.
Yes.
And it will not be opened all the time.
No.
It will only be opened every certain period of time.
Right. When you have events going on, yes.
Because we don't want the traffic to go through there.
Oh, no, I can, I can agree with you. And I think, uh, I thought you weren't building a first floor in the back there. Just, uh, second and third floor are on piers, correct?
The extension, no, well, it aligns with the main level of the restaurant.
On the first floor?
First floor.
Or the, or the upper floor bar?
No, first floor.
No, first floor.
But it will be on piers.
Right. Okay. But the first floor, are we talking about the first floor when you walk in the door?
Or the upper part?
Or the first floor, the upper part?
Where it goes up where the bar is.
The upper part.
So it's the upper part?
Okay.
But it's still first floor.
Okay. But, all right.
Yeah.
There's two elevations, so I was thinking...
That's why the piers?
Yeah.
The piers are to keep, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. So I need a motion for final? Mr. Bond makes the motion for final. Mr. Mandell seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I need, that's it. Okay. And all with the conditions. Okay? So, do I need to read the conditions again? Okay?
I think so.
No, I'll read them for...
They're going to have to do the floodproofing, because they can't raise...
That's part of the conditions.
Right.
Okay. So we have John Giardella's, he has to, he has to live with his two conditions. Uh, Bruce Peters, one. Rocket County Planning has four. Uh, Health, nope. Highways has three. Bureau of Fire Prevention has six. Then there's correspondence from about the, uh, the minutes from the Akebor meeting of January 23rd, and also from Booker Engineering's two comments, two conditions that have to be met. And that's all I have. So I need, uh, we have the second, all in favor? Aye. I need a motion for minutes. Cheryl?
Yeah, February 11th to February 25th.
February 11th to February 25th?
Cheryl, what was it called? We have the...
Yes, I got you changed. I fixed it. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. As amended? Minutes as amended? Anybody? Mr. Young? Mr. Sweeney? All in favor? Aye. And I need a motion for dismissal?
I'll make the motion adjourned.
Mr. Warren makes the motion? Mr. Mandell seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, y'all.
Thank you.